Good evening. This meeting was called in accordance, let's see, now, I just have to tell you this, I forgot my glasses. You too. So, I have this paper up here like this, so I can see. So, pardon me.
And we changed it a lot.
And you changed it. Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Can you use it?
I certainly can. Thank you. Nothing like seeing. In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act NJSA 1046 PL 1975 231 S1. You did change this. Amendment 2006 C 70 S2. The Asbury Park Board of Education has provided adequate notice of this meeting by sending a notice of the time, date, location, and to the extent known, the agenda of this meeting to the Asbury Park Press and the New Coaster on December 15th, 2017 by email. Copies of this notice have also been placed in administrative building bulletin board, district schools, Asbury Park Municipal Building, Asbury Park Police Department, and filed with the city clerk on December 15th, 2017. Our mission statement. Asbury Park School District will provide all students with a comprehensive and progressive education where everyone possesses the skills and character to succeed in a diverse, evolving global society. Mr. Hastings, after all of that, roll call, please.
Ms. Breach.
Here.
Mr. Grillo.
Ms. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Lattaraca.
Here.
Ms. Lozinski.
Here.
Mr. Pinkney.
Here.
Mr. Saunders.
Here.
Ms. Abes Anderson.
Here.
Thank you.
Stand, please, from back to left. Our question is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation, unuttered, inviolable, liberty, and the last straw.
Mr. Hastings, we have a public budget hearing that you are going to present to us this evening.
So, I'm going to accompany Mr. Hastings and just set the context for our budget meeting. As you know, in the Asbury Park 2th District, I'm a fellow of building a brighter future. Building a brighter future is simply defined as hope and opportunity. And so, when we talk about hope and opportunities, and we reflect on the fact that we are an innovative district with innovative programs, a large part of providing that hope and opportunity means that we're able to ensure, and think about our why. Our why is reflected in our moral imperative. And our moral imperative sets the stage and the context for all that we do in the Asbury Park School Districts. And succinctly put, our moral imperative is that the reality that is that an 18-year-old who does not have the skills to be college or career-ready is effectively sentenced to a lifetime of marginal employment and second-class citizenry. And so, as you reflect on the programs that you've approved and the gains that we've seen, our instructional program has specifically been designed to set the context for building a bright future and providing our students with hope. So, when we look at our instructional programs, it includes the continuation of a comprehensive literacy initiative. In the past, when you looked at the comprehensive literacy initiative, you saw a lot of interventions. Now, you see the first item there is Journeys, our new textbook program that's been adopted to support our students in terms of their on-grade level acquisition. What does that mean? It means that we're shifting the tide. We're going to the next level in the Asbury Park School District where our students are no longer relying so heavily on the deficient, uh, the interventions, but they are poised and positioned to really excel and receive modifications on grade level through their core literacy program. We still are maintaining the programs that have been in place so that we can continue to build this bright future. We do have students that won't remain in interventions. We're not expecting to ever get rid of interventions because as students come into the district, we want to continue to have comprehensive supports for all of our students. But we are continuing with our College and Career Readiness Institute because we want to ensure that we are engaging our students in experiential learning opportunities, opportunities where the city of Asbury Park becomes an extension of their classroom. I was just in an alliance meeting yesterday, and they were asking about student participation at some of the city meetings. Because it's critically important to have student presence there, it brings to life the civics lessons that they've been engaged in. And so, when they have a seat at the table, they can become more civic-minded and more involved in grassroots organization, um, organization and activism. We're maintaining our positive behavior and support intervention services. As was shared before, Dr. Howard and her team have really been leading the charge around social and emotional wellness. It's much, much more involved and comprehensive than just a positive behavior and support system. It's more than just having students breathing or engaging in yoga activities. It is a comprehensive approach to address the needs socially and emotionally to ensure that when they are in the classroom, they can access grade-level content. The Power of Ten, which is our dropout prevention program, we're going to maintain that along with our Second Chance Academy. Our Second Chance Academy was designed to support students that transfer out of the Asbury Park High School because it's going to be a challenge for them, perhaps they're overage and undercredited, and as a result, they may not experience this building a brighter future that we speak of. So, going into the Second Chance Academy affords them an opportunity to actually have and receive a high school diploma. We have one student that will be graduating this June from the Second Chance Academy. They will walk at graduation because they will have completed those requirements. We have another student that will be able to participate. So, when we talk about that, we're talking about having comprehensive supports for all of our students. We also have Debbie Sylvia, and Debbie Sylvia, our new Director of School Counseling, and her team have really been working diligently around college fairs, college tours. I'm delighted to announce 76 percent, it's more than three-quarters of our seniors have now been accepted into college. So, when we talk about how do we know what we're doing works, we know that it works because when I arrived in the Asbury Park School District, we did not have students, especially three-quarters of a percent of, I mean, three-quarters of our population being accepted into colleges. So, kudos to the team. I don't do this work in isolation. I have a wonderful team that continues to support that work, and it lends context and backdrop to how and where we are being fiscally responsible in applying the monies. So, without further ado, Mr. Hastings.
Thank you, Ms. Gray. Thank you. Um, what we're going to do this evening is talk about the 2019 budget. Believe it or not, we're already at that time of the year where we talk about next year's funding and the plan for next year in terms of the budget and how that budget is going to support the educational program of the district. Again, our mission statement that the Asbury Park School District will provide all students with a comprehensive and progressive education where everyone possesses the skills and character to succeed in a diverse, evolving global society. Our budget for next year reflects and represents those tenants and is the recommendation of the administration and the board as the best way to move forward to achieve those goals. What is a budget or what does the budget represent? Well, it's a representation of the district's needs and priorities, our educational needs and priorities. It's our planned revenues and planned expenses, and it's also a living document. We've also often discussed different priorities that come up during the school year and how we're going to address those and whether or not they were in the budget, and we can achieve those, and that's why we call it a living document, because we then would make changes to the priorities and changes to the funding associated with those various priorities. About two weeks ago, we sat as a group and talked about the budget and state funding and how state funding impacts the district. In this slide, you can see in 2013, the state funded the district with $55,195,000. As of what is estimated for next year, $55,244,000. That's an increase over about seven years of $49,000. So, as you can see, the budget has been flat over the past seven, seven years there, and costs have been increasing each of those years. So, we're being told to do more with basically less. On this graph, you can see pretty clearly through those bars, 2013 at just over $55, 000, 2018 there, you'll see a little dip. If you recall, last year, state funding went out in February and March. The districts were told what the funding levels would be by the state. We put together our budgets and moved them forward through the various boards of education in the state to get them approved. However, the state had some budget issues of its own, and in June, the end of June, they made some adjustments to aid, and we lost $981,553,000. Again, looking at 2019, we are again back up at about $55 million, but we are hearing that that may change again this year as well, and you may be hearing that in the news as they talk about school funding and how the formula may or may not be changed as it relates to state aid to various districts. The reason we talk about state aid is because of this slide. If you look at the percentage of our operating budget that's funded through state aid from 2013 to 2019, you can see it's pretty steady at about 80 percent. So, 80 percent of the funding for the district, 87, 80 percent of the $68 million of our operating budget comes from the state. So, when you turn on the news, when you read the paper and hear the discussions about changes in state aid, those changes in state aid impact us in a very important and very drastic way. So, we want to remain cognizant of that and those discussions and participate in those discussions through our representatives and congressmen to make sure that we can continue to fund the district and move us forward. Again, the components of our budget, we have our operating budget, which handles the day-to-day activities. That consists of the state aid and then the local tax levy. That's $68 million for 2019. The district receives various grants and entitlements. We get $13,175,000 in grants and entitlements, and about $10 million of that is for pre-K, pre-K school aid. The remainder of that is through the old NCLB, or what's now called ESSA, and then we have some various other grants that come into the district to make up that difference. The district does not have any debt on the books, so there is no contribution for debt. This is a look at the revenue sources that we have. So, if you look at the first line, the local tax levy, this current year, it's $7.2 million. Next year, it will increase by 2% to 7.399, and that represents an increase in the tax levy of $145,000. We get extraordinary aid for special education uses. That's remained constant. We just discussed the state aid. As you can see, from last year, from this year to next, it'll increase about $796,000, provided there aren't any additional changes made to that. The district does have reserves. We have capital reserve, maintenance reserve, emergency reserves. We've used those to help fund the district and to help fund projects. You can see in 2018, we used $1.6 million to help fund this year's budget. Next year, we're proposing using $500,000. Part of that $1.1 million difference you see there was based on a one-time assessment to the district of state aid, and that's now been used up in its entirety, so that's no longer available. Fund balance from $3.2 million in 2018 to $4.2 million to help fund next year, that you could look at as funds that weren't spent in this year's budget that we're going to roll over to next year's budget to help move that forward. The other account is for Medicaid and Medicaid assistance that we receive. That's provided by the state, and that $98,000 represents about 80 to 85 percent of the prior year's number. And then, we also use carryover in our pre-K through 3 grades this current year, and we're not anticipating utilizing any of that pre-K money in our pre-K to 3 for 2019. This one is important so that you get a sense of where the money is spent. So, we get $68 million, and where does that all go? As you can see from this slide, $34 million of that goes to salaries, and that represents 58, 50 percent of that $68 million number. Benefits, that's healthcare and insurance, almost $10 million, that's another about 15 percent. So, you can see there that 65 percent of our operating budget goes to salaries and benefits. We have charter school tuition at $8.3 million. That represents another 12 percent. We don't have any choice in that. That's a number that's given to us by the state and based on the enrollment of the charter schools. And then, we have our out-of-district placements at about $4.5 million, which represents almost 7 percent. So, you're looking at about 84 percent of that $68 million already accounted for in those four categories. And those are all mandatory costs, and that's before we get to anything else. In this fairly faded pie here, that we should have made a little bit darker so everybody could see it, but you can see that about two-thirds of that pie is again made up of the salaries and benefits. To the left, that darker green is the charter school, the lighter green is the out-of-district, and that leaves us with that 16 percent for everything else. So, 16 percent is going to cover all the other expenses, including the fixed costs of utilities and contract costs. We talked a little bit about special revenue. Of that 13.175, we get preschool education aid, the NCLB, which is now called ESSA, Every Student Succeeds, IDEA, which is for special ed needs. We do provide as a pass-through aid to our non-public schools. The district has been participating in a 21st Century Grant, and we also have a vocational partnership with the county vocational school. This I wanted to touch on because this is somewhat good news. Over the course of the past several years, we've looked at our budgetary per-people costs, our advertised per-people costs, and of course, everybody's heard about us through Governor Christie and the costs per student. And as you can see from this, from 2014-15 to 2018-19, our costs have been declining, and the administration's been working very hard, along with the staff, to make accommodations so that we're spending our money wisely, and we're working on improving those efficiencies. Our administrative costs similarly, which would be our administrators versus the student count, again, is moving from $2,100 down to about $1,700. And then, finally, in the past, we've had some issue with our legal costs and the legal activities in the district, and you can see there that in 2014-15, it was almost $100 per student, and now we're down to just under 50, so we've cut that effectively in half over the course of these years. We want to talk about the tax impact and what this all means in terms of the residents of town. You can see, first column, 2017-18, which is the current year, and then 18-19, it's a 6 percent increase in our ratables. Our school tax levy, however, is only allowed to be increased by 2 percent. So, if you do the division there, you'll see that based on the calculation, we're looking at 54 cents as a tax rate for the school per $100 of assessed value. Again, we have no tax levy that represents any debt because we don't have any, so our tax rate for 2019 is going to be 54 cents per $100 of assessed value. What does that mean? So, last year, the average home was about $248,000. Last year, which is the second row there, the tax levy was $1,388 for the school portion. Based on the current numbers, on the current or same assessment, that would decrease by $50 to $1,338. If you go online and take a look at what they say is the average home value in Asbury Park, it is now $310,422. Based on that tax rate, the school portion would be $1,674. Our election was moved this past year. We had the election in April, and this year, we've moved it back to November, so it'll be November for the next several years. And election day is November 6th. Polls are open from 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and I'd like to thank you for your attention and would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Are there any questions from the board members?
The question today is, are taxes going down in terms of student tax for the, is that right? Or?
Well, the taxes are going down in terms of the rate.
Right.
So, the rate is going down, and that's because we only increased our tax levy 2 percent while the ratables went up 6 percent. However, if you look at that average price per home, again, it's going to be dependent on the assessment of a particular home. The assessment there from last year to this year is up almost 25 percent, so it could
Thank you, Mr. Hastings.
Thank you.
Okay. No presentations. Mrs. Gray, your superintendent's report, please.
Good evening. With regard to our monthly student enrollment, it's remained consistent across all five of the buildings. Our student attendance has also been consistent with this time of the year. We're seeing an increase in terms of the diversity in our district as it relates to one of our subgroups. Our white population is increasing, and particularly noteworthy because in such a short period of time, we are realizing that our programs are far-reaching and have far implications in terms of engaging more members within our community. Student suspensions are, for the most part, consistent from month to month. We're seeing a decrease, however, in two of our elementary schools. Again, large part due to the fact that we have very comprehensive social and emotional programming that dovetails with our curriculum and instruction. Our enrollment has increased from, excuse me, our enrollment has decreased somewhat from last month, but for the most part, remains fairly consistent across all of the schools. That completes the superintendent's report in terms of our demographic data and our suspension enrollment data. I want to also mention that this Saturday, when we talk about our innovative programs, one of the innovative components was the documentary that we engaged in where we incorporated hip-hop and literacy and created a boot camp. This Saturday, at the Asbury Park Music and Film Festival, our documentary will be aired right here in our home, and I'm very delighted to share that it will be aired at 11:00 AM at Bradley Park by the Paramount Theater. Later that evening, there will also be a concert with Wyclef John, and one of our students will have an opportunity to go onstage at the Stone Pony and emcee with Wyclef John. So, it's an extremely exciting time where we are partnering with members in the city, and they want to partner and support our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Gray. And now, it is time for public participation. In accordance with Board Policy 0167, please come to the lectern. You have three minutes. We need your name and your address, please.
Alicia Simmons, Sewell Avenue, Asbury Park, President of Mammoth Ocean County National Action Network and Educational Chair of NAACP Asbury Park Neptune. Here for, kind of, want to ask a question. I don't know if you're aware of that one of our schools are without cameras, and I had a couple community people approach me about such school. I don't want to name the school, but I just want to make it aware of maybe some of the board members or the superintendent's not aware that one of our schools are without cameras. And also, I'm very excited about all the great things happening here in the district. There's an educational component that I'm bringing to the district called Nantech World, well, to the, to the town. It is full Cisco coding classes for free. If anyone doesn't know what Cisco Education is, it's computerized education, a coding. I'm not really a coder. But it's a free education where we have a deal and arrangement with Cisco. We have a accelerated program, which is four months. That means people can come outside of the programming with a Cisco Education where they can take anywhere in the world and make $60,000 to $70,000 off the bat, four months after graduating school. And we also have a lot of great other programs coming for the youth, 3D coding, engineering, and other great things I'm excited about bringing to the district. So, again, thank you for your time, and have a nice night.
Um, I'm just going to address the camera issue really quickly. It's an issue we've been working on since January for that particular school. We're just pricing different camera systems and seeing what's going to work best because there's all kinds of different systems. There's the, the big one with the camera that revolves. So, we've been, we've been working closely with Mr. Sosa to remedy that situation.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay. Then, I will close, public participation. Thank you.
I would just like to report, first of all, that the state did assist in the preparation of the budget. We have been working constantly with Trenton to make certain that the district has, addresses the needs of the students as well as the state aid that's been available to us. Since you do have a monitor, that makes it a little easier to get into the district or into Trenton to, to participate in some of the discussions that are going on right now. You may be aware of the fact that the, there's a huge push to redesign the formula, and because I'm a monitor, I can represent the, the district as Mr. Hastings and Mrs. Gray will in making certain that any revision of state aid hopefully does not hurt the district of Asbury Park. So, that's our main concern right now with working with the state as far as budget is concerned. I can also report tonight that the committee and the board has completed and followed the process outlined to, to search and appoint a new superintendent of schools. The process has been completely within the description and expectation of a search. Every step has been followed, and it is now up to the Board of Education to make their choice and their vote so that the public may also share in, in that knowledge.
Thank you, Ms. Morris. Mr. Hastings?
Should I get a motion on A1 for item 10A through C, the minutes from the last meetings? Moved by Mr. Lattaraca and seconded by Ms. Lozinski. Any questions or comments? Mr. Lattaraca?
Yes.
Ms. Lozinski?
Yes, on the 2, but the 13th, I was absent, so I'm going to abstain.
Thank you. Ms. Breach?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Pinkney?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Ms. Etienne?
I'm abstaining on the 2, but the 13th, yes.
Thank you. Ms. Abes Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. We have on A2, the calendar items as well. A2, we have items 11 and 12 for our calendar. Could I get a motion on A2 to accept 11 and 12?
Move it.
Thank you. Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Lozinski?
Yes.
Ms. Breach?
Yes.
Mr. Lattaraca?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Pinkney?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Ms. Etienne?
Yes.
Ms. Abes Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Hastings. And now, Mrs. Gray. Do you want to turn?
Good evening. I'd like to make a recommendation for Items 1 through 32, Page B1 to B8, to be a consent agenda.
Move it.
Second question. Roll call.
So all Items B1 through B8, 1 through 32. Ms. Lozinski?
Yes.
Ms. Breach?
Yes, it's abstaining on B4, 9A.
B4, 9A. Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lattaraca?
Yes.
Mr. Pinkney?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Ms. Etienne?
Yes.
Ms. Abes Anderson?
Yes.
All items carry.
Okay, as you know, our state monitor, she spoke about the superintendent's search, and we had participated, the search committee had participated in interviewing and following the process. You also are aware that our former superintendent is now the Commissioner of Education, vacated that seat. So we've been searching, and we were looking at who could fill this seat. Someone that has been with the former superintendent from the very beginning, someone who has been doing a fabulous job from day one. So it gives me great pleasure. If you recall, when I had to say goodbye to our former superintendent, I was crying, and now I have a big smile on my face as I read this here. Whereas the Asbury Park Board of Education has a vacancy for the position of superintendent, and whereas the board wishes to fill the vacancy of the superintendent position, now it be further resolved that the board appoints Sanja K. Gray as superintendent effective July 1, 2018, on the date to be determined contingent on the approval of the employment contract by the Executive County Superintendent of Schools. Be it further resolved that the board president, that's me, the board secretary and board attorney are hereby authorized to take any and all steps that are necessary and appropriate to carry out this action of the board. I need a motion, please.
I'll move it. Second.
Oh, see, we are, okay. And any questions? Roll call, Mr. Hastings, please.
Ms. Lozinski?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Breach?
Unfortunately, due to a conflict, I have to abstain.
Mr. Lattaraca?
Yes.
Mr. Pinkney?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Ms. Etienne?
Yes.
Ms. Abes Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Woo-hoo! May I ask you to do something? Crack some more?
Could I get a motion for all Items C1, Number 1 through C8, Number 15?
Move it. Question.
Yes.
Ms. Lozinski?
Yes.
Ms. Breach?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Pinkney?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Ms. Etienne?
Yes.
Ms. Abes Anderson?
Yes.
All items carry. Thank you.
We want to thank you all for coming out tonight, and it was a joyous evening, as you see, okay? We have a plan, we're moving forward, and we have our doofy in place. You know we're going to be rocking up in here. So I'm real excited about all of this, so I just like to say goodnight to all of you. I need a motion to close.
Move! Oh, you're all excited. Wait a minute, wait a minute, hold it, hold it.
Motion. Does someone make a motion?
Don't make a motion yet. I'm sorry. Our superintendent wants to say something.
So I didn't want to belabor the moment by walking around to hug each of you. I am a hugger, so Barbara, I'm coming to give you a hug. But I just want to take this opportunity to thank you for your support. Since I arrived in the Asbury Park School District, you have always supported the vision. At times when you didn't see it, you gave me an opportunity to share from curriculum and instruction, the vision for where we were going to go, for which I am so thankful and appreciative. I could not let this night pass without thanking you. And also in supporting some of the newer members that have joined the team, thank you so much for trusting what you have not fully heard in terms of the next level for the Asbury Park School District. To my outstanding team, I'm very fortunate to have a wonderful executive committee that comes and really we get behind closed doors and we talk very thoughtfully about how building a brighter future is going to be in reality. Dr. Howard, thank you for constantly being there. Jeff, thank you. Ivy, thank you. Our newest member of the executive committee, Debbie Sylvia, and all of you sitting out there. You represent the team that is going to take this school district to the next level. I appreciate you. Thank you for your support and for coming out tonight. I'm very excited for what this is, what the implications are for the future. Appreciate you. And I must thank the state monitor. I am so sorry. Carol Marvitz, you are and have been a wonderful, wonderful support throughout this entire process. Thank you so much.
All right, so we made a motion, right? All in favor?
Bye.
We'll see you next month.